I would like to call this meeting to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker?
Yes, here.
Mr. Carangelo?
Present.
Mrs. Chu? Mr. Sizmar?
Here.
Mr. Hong?
Here.
Mrs. Reese?
Here.
Mr. Winston? Mrs. Lacks and Mrs. Gwos.
Here. We have a quorum, please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there posted at the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotaped meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of those videotaping rules. Whereas, the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting and whereas these subjects are within the exceptions to the Open Public Meeting Act and are permitted to be discussed in closed session, the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, those items listed on tonight's agenda. The length of the closed session is estimated to be one hour, after which the public meeting of the Board shall resume and action will be taken. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Becker, Mr. Carangelo, discussion? Four? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstention? Motion carries. We are enclosed. But welcome. And we're going to start with the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Vice President Gwos, and good evening, everyone. Congratulations to the East Brunswick High School's eight National Merit Scholarship semifinalists. They are part of the 16,000 semifinalists selected to be considered for the 2022-2023 National Merit Scholarship Award. We are very proud of all of them as they embody East Brunswick High School's motto of achieving excellence with honor and integrity. And we wish them all the best. Junior Danielle Letterman represented East Brunswick High School Athletics this past Sunday at the Title IX 50th Anniversary Luncheon. The event had several females speak in a roundtable format about how they've impacted New Jersey athletics. We are excited about our K-12 instructional coach model this year. Our instructional coaches will be utilizing a student-centered model when working with teachers. This model puts the needs of students at the center. By focusing on student learning, our instructional coaches can directly impact teacher practice and student achievement in collaboration with a teacher. And together, they'll engage in cycles that span four to six weeks. Together, they will analyze student data, co-plan, co-teach, reflect, and set goals. The district welcomed 18 student teachers this fall. And we are grateful to our teachers, counselors, and other certificated staff members who gave their time and energy and continue to give it to grow our future educators. Grade K-6 students and teachers have begun to use our new math program, Envision Math. Following curriculum work over the summer and district-wide training on September 1st, Envision Math was rolled out with its emphasis on problem-based learning and conceptual understanding. The wealth of online and print resources in the program will allow our K-6 teachers to meet the diverse academic needs in their classrooms and differentiate instruction. Churchill's cafeteria serving lines were renovated during the summer. The new serving lines allow the child nutrition department to offer a variety of options to students. So stand by for this. For breakfast, a variety of different sandwiches, omelets, waffles, or French toast are available. For lunch, students can choose from the made-to-order deli station, salad bar, or freshly-made pizzas. In addition, on a rotating basis, students can partake in a taco bar, made-to-order Asian wakery, breakfast for lunch, or pasta bar, just to name a few. I had a can of soup for lunch today. I want to be a Churchill student. Our stadium track work continues, and we are anticipating completion next week. We are anticipating. And by the way, as we go through the pictures, the finish is really, it appears to be wet, but it is not. It is actually a very solid finish. And the next picture, you start to see the top finishes being put on. Mr. Giuliani, do you want to make any comments about the track installation?
Not really.
No? We're just looking forward to it being done.
I am looking forward to this project finally coming to a close.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I must say that the community really enjoyed the stadium at our first home football game, and the turf looked fantastic. And so, give us another week, and it's going to look much better for our second home game, which is coming this next Friday. Also, for the first time in five years, the president's own United States Marine Band returns to the Northeast on tour, performing a free concert on Thursday, October 27, beginning at 7:30 PM in the JM PAC at Hammer Schuld Upper Elementary School. Please visit marineband.mreins.mil, that's M-I-L, forward slash tour, for ticket information. Free tickets are available online starting Tuesday, September 27. There is a four-ticket limit per request. Seating is general admission all around, and ticket holders must be seated by 7:15 PM, and that's for security reasons. Remaining seats will be released to the standby line at that time. So we'll continue to report out on that, so there'll be other reminders. Just a reminder, all schools and administrative offices will be closed Monday, this coming Monday, September 26, and Tuesday, September 27, for Fall Recession 1, as well as Wednesday, October 5, for Fall Recession 2. And then Wednesday, October 12, will be a single-session day for students in the high school only. On this day, we'll host the PSAT for 10th and 11th grade students. And 12th grade students, and Megan may talk about this, will participate in the senior startup program. And during the program, seniors will take part in leadership team-building activities and a community service project. The community service project will bridge current seniors with 5th grade students at Hammer Schuld Upper Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, we have a presentation by Mr. Giuliani.
Yes.
Yes? So I would like a question mark there.
A very exciting topic, school taxes, the budget, and collections. So, Karen. So, this is probably a very dry topic, but I think it's an important one in terms of understanding the process between the adoption of a school budget and how that ultimately translates into the school tax bill that is released. Now, one of the fundamental aspects, and there's a lot of information here, so I'm going to just kind of go over a few key points. But one of the aspects that makes this issue a little bit confusing is that the tax bill process and the school budget process are not on the same year. The school budget process is on a fiscal year basis. It's July 1 to June 30. Yet, the way the taxes for the school budget are raised, it's on a split-year basis. So what does that mean? So let's look at this particular example on the chart. So, the pointer's not working too well on that. Well, so if we look at the dark blue tall bars on this chart, those dark blue tall bars represent the school budget tax levy for the general fund. If we look at the very first one to the far left, it's flanked by two kind of orange rust-colored bars, one to the left and one to the right. What that represents is the tax bill for that year. But, this is where it starts getting real fun. The bar on the left of the blue, the furthest, leftmost bar, the rust-colored bar, is one-half of the tax from the prior year. And then, the rust bar to the right of that blue bar is one-half of the tax for that current year, for fiscal '21. So the tax bill shows one-half of one year's budget and one-half of the other year's budget. That's not something that we make up. That is just a function of how taxes are raised in the community. So, you'll see, as we move along, then, there's a gray bar. That gray bar represents, the first gray bar, represents the total funded. That's the total of those two orange bars. Then there's a yellow or golden bar. That represents the amount of taxes received by the school district for that year. Those amounts match what the budget was. When we talk about budgeting and we make our budget presentations, we talk in terms of the school budget on a July 1 to June 30 basis. We don't talk about it in a split-year basis. That's, it just confuses budget years. So, in this example, when this, these are factual, this is factual data. When we look at this data and we talk about what happens from one year to the next in terms of the budget, let's focus on those three blue bars. And they're circled at the bottom in terms of indicating the budget that it applies to. So the first bar was for fiscal year 2021, and the amount of tax levy that was incorporated into that year's budget. It was $132.4 million. In the second blue bar, for fiscal year 2022, it was $136.5 million. In our most recent budget approval for fiscal year 2023, it is $136.5 million. As we said during the budget development and presentation process, those two numbers are the same. From fiscal '22 to fiscal '23, the tax levy in the budget for school purposes did not change. Now, in terms of how that reflects itself in the tax bill, because the tax bill has that split, the realization does not become seen in the billing process. It's delayed by the year. It doesn't happen immediately. For our purposes as a budget, you see that the amounts remained at zero increase, but the impact doesn't get seen immediately. Again, that's the billing process that we don't have any control over. Subsequently, the next chart. If you would, thank you, Karen. Debt service. So debt service is the payment on the mortgage, if you will. It's the same process. So, in fiscal 2021, you'll see, and that's the furthest-left blue bar, that represents the fiscal year 2021 tax levy that was budgeted. And for that year, in terms of the tax bill, it had two components. It had half of the prior year's tax levy that was budgeted and half of that year's tax levy that was budgeted. In total, if you look at the gray bar, it's at $6,663. Now, our debt service was going down. So in this case, while the amount on the tax bill appears to be more than the blue bar, the reality is that the benefit of that reduction is delayed because of the way the billing cycle works. So, that first blue bar is $6,632, but the amount that needed to be raised was $6,663, slightly more. We go into the next year after that, and that's the, again, I'm going to distinguish the dark blue bar. The debt service for fiscal year 2022 was $6,343. That's the amount that was budgeted to be raised. The amount that the district received was $6,343, the same amount. Now, there was an anomaly that occurred in that year because, and it wasn't something that was initially realized, but the community paid toward half of that. The balance the board paid in that year, that was covered entirely by the board, through other resources. So essentially, the net between the debt service and the general fund caused the tax bill to virtually remain flat overall. As we move into the fiscal 2023 budget, fiscal 2023, the dark blue line circled at the bottom is $5,300,000. That is, in comparison to the prior year circled number for tax, the tax portion of the debt service budget, that is a $1 million reduction from one year to the next. The effect of that will not be seen until the next tax cycle. Does everybody get that? There's going to be a test now. Which is reflected on the red, on the right? That's correct. So on the far right, where you see that orange bar, to the far right, that is the second half of that debt service. And that does not get affected until the next cycle. And if I put on my projection hat based on an action that the board took during this past year, it was within the last six months or so, where the board approved a refinancing of debt, that number for next year's budget, for when we do the fiscal '24 budget, the debt service will be even less because we were able to refinance and thus require less money to pay that debt in the next year. So, that's a story yet to be told because we're not in that cycle yet. But that's what I would say that we can expect.
Thank you. All right.
I have questions.
You have your questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot.
That's okay.
Questions, Mr. Sizmar.
So I think, and I appreciate the presentation. I have no problem with the debt service fund. I understand that. As I'm looking back at the general fund tax levy, a little more between the gray and the gold, it seems like, the way I understand a levy, it's a debt owed to the government from the taxpayers, correct? It seems like the taxpayers, and correct me if I'm wrong, were not asked enough in prior bills. Because some of the numbers that were thrown out, and if they're wrong, who said there's going to be a 23 cents tax increase this coming bill.
That was, I will tell you, unequivocally, we never said anything with regard to cents on the tax bill. We stay away from talking about, how many pennies does a budget impact, does a school budget impact the tax bill? Because we don't manage the ratables. That ratable number will change from year to year. So, we might say something that may not be in alignment with what the ratables are at the time that tax bills are struck. So, I can tell you that it's probably been 15, maybe 20 years since we've gotten away from talking about cents because then we have to explain, how does the split tax year work? And that becomes, you know, everybody's eyes roll to the back of their heads in trying to explain that concept. We strictly focus on the budget. What is the budget? What is the tax levy on the budget? And how does that change from one year to the next?
Okay, so going back to the May 5 meeting, there was, I know we don't have that slide in front of us today, but there was a slide, and I wasn't at that meeting, but I did my research afterwards. There was a slide that talked about the general fund tax levy and the debt service. And at the bottom was a parenthesis, .05.
No, there wasn't.
Decrease.
It was a percentage, it was a percentage of decrease.
Point, .05?
I don't believe it was .05.
I think it was .07.
But that represented a percentage of decrease, not cents.
It was?
Yeah.
On the slide?
Yep. No, I don't have that slide. So I, but I can tell you that it was a percentage. It was not talking about cents. So it was a point zero, so it was a five basis point? It was a percentage of reduction. It was not talking about tax rate or cents on the taxes. It absolutely did not discuss it in those terms.
So I guess my question is, as I'm looking at the gray and the gold bars, the gray and the gold bar in 2022 funded and 2023 receivable match. The gray bars are less in 2020 and 2021 to 2022. Why don't they match on those years? Because that almost, it almost parallels the three-point, the one that went back to the township.
I'll tell you why.
Please.
Maybe I'm going to stand up by the screen for the benefit of people that are sitting out here and not understanding what we're talking about. So, this gray bar
Yes.
is less than the total received for tax purposes. This gold bar and this blue bar match. These two match. But this one doesn't. But that's because of that timing difference in how taxes are raised. If you take the calendar year 2020 tax bill for the second half of the 2020 budget and the calendar year 2020 tax bill for the first half of the fiscal '21 budget, those two amounts combined equal the gray. That represents how taxes are raised and the disparity between how taxes are raised and how the budget functions. There's a timing difference. The other half, this represents one half of this blue bar. This represents one half of this blue bar. What did I do? I'm sorry.
You moved it.
Don't touch the screen.
Don't even point at it.
Okay. So, this bar represents one half of the blue. The other half is here because that doesn't get raised until the next cycle. If you add this one and this one together, they equal the amount to be raised according to the budget. It's a timing issue. It's confusing. Did everybody get that? Do you want to take a test on it? Neither do I. But that's really, it's a timing issue. That's why it becomes such a confusing issue to talk about in a budget presentation because, believe me, I've been looking at this stuff for years. And I hate looking at this because it's very difficult to explain. We always focus on the budget, and how does that tax levy in the budget translate in comparison to the next year? And then the year after that, and so forth. That's how we always talk in terms of our budgets. Does that help?
A little bit, but where on that would it show the, I think it was 3.1, I could be correct, two meetings ago that we gave back to the township.
Right.
Where would that be reflected in the bill? Because it seems to me like not enough was asked of the taxpayer in the past, and do we have to play catch-up at some point?
That was the debt service, right?
No, that was.
On the debt service, Bernie.
That was the debt service.
Yeah.
I'm trying not to touch the screen. Right here. So in, for fiscal '22, the last budget year, this half of the debt service is what the board covered. That was the amount, that didn't reflect itself in the tax bill. That was the amount that the board covered. And the other half gets raised in the current tax bill.
So it should have been asked for back in 2021?
It would have been in the 2021 tax bill.
But it was not?
It wasn't. That's correct.
So that's, I guess that's what I'm saying.
And it won't be because that was covered.
And it will never equate itself out in the future through taxes?
No, it will not be raised through taxes. So it was, for lack of a better term, we could say that was a tax holiday for that one year. Because that did not reflect itself in the tax bill, and the taxpayers did not have to pay toward that debt service amount.
Okay.
Did anyone else have any questions?
Yeah.
All right.
Mr. Winston?
Thank you. Mr. Shunai, thank you very much for that presentation. I'll tell you, even with my background, I'm having trouble understanding this, and that actually concerns me, which I will like to talk to you offline. However, you did say something that I want to point out. Understanding there's a 23 cent coming down to the taxpayers, that's been noted, to your point, by the township in some recent communication from the Township Administration. You did mention, though, that you see a million-dollar reduction in debt service and the likelihood of refinancing that may in fact create more relief on the debt service side. Is that, did I understand that correctly?
Yes.
Will that equate to a tax cut to the public or something that they would be able to see reflected in future tax year?
If our debt service tax amount required reduces beyond, reduces below what the current year's budget is for taxes on debt service? Yes.
All right, I would encourage us to try to make that so.
Yes. But again, I don't have the data in front of me, but based on the refinancing that we did and the lesser rates, that there will be a reduction that we'll see. Okay.
Does anyone else have any questions? All right, thank you. Now we are moving on to our student representatives report. Megan, you made it through the math.
She was taking screenshots of everything I saw.
Yeah. I actually have a little cheat sheet because I have a few bullet points to go through, but.
On the taxes?
We'll see. Oh, yeah, yeah, I was taking notes on that, too. I took accounting last year. I got it.
Then we can have a talk about debts and credits. Yeah. No, she didn't.
I'll study a little bit, I'll study a little bit first. Maybe, I'll study a little bit, I'll study a little bit first. Um, okay, so, for the start of this school year, our biggest change was the new start times. So, for those of you that don't know, we pretty much started about half an hour later in the school day. I think we had mixed responses to that last year because nobody really knew what was going to happen. But this year, especially now that we've kind of gotten the hang of it for a month, we've had like really good responses for that. I think the biggest thing is kids are realizing how much an extra half hour sleep really does. And especially for when we want to go in early to talk to teachers before school or have like extra club meetings, that really does help having the extra half hour. So, thank you to you guys for making that happen for us. Another thing we're getting used to is a new numbering system at the high school. So, we're going from the old alphabet systems, like ABC hall, to like the thousands. That's a transition, but we're working on that. And this past Monday, we had an activity fair. So, this is personally one of my favorite school activities. Basically, what we do is all the, or most of the clubs get their own table. And like the executive board or like the members put together like a trifold or demonstrations or pamphlets or whatever it is. And they basically market their club to everybody at the high school. And all the kids in their homerooms go outside for an extended homeroom. And for an hour, they just go around the school looking at all the different clubs. And it's a really good way for sophomores and lowerclassmen to get involved with their activities. I've done an activity fair for a couple of years now, and I think it's a really great experience. So, we had that. And going with activities, one of our new activities this year is an esports club. So, that was an initiative. Hearing some mixed signals about the esports club. But, um, that was an initiative from some of our students. And they worked on that over the summer, and they got that up and running for this school year. So, right now, I think they're working on a space in our media center, one of the computer labs, to set up like some PCs and stuff for the kids to game on. So, that's been getting a lot of interest from our high schoolers. And with that, definitely thanks to EBEF and Dr. Vanilla for making that happen. So, yeah, for us seniors, we're all pretty busy right now with college apps. We have a lot of deadlines coming up. So, that's pretty busy for us. But during that time, we've had Senior Sunrise, which was a really big success. And that was funded by the PTSA, set up by them. So, big thanks to them. And we have a comedy show coming up in like the middle of October, around the PSAT time. So that's for us seniors to enjoy. So, we're really excited about that, too. Besides that, that's pretty much what we've been doing for the beginning of the school year.
Did you get to the football game? The Baird Inn was outrageously loud.
I did not, but I saw videos. People showed up.
Mm-hmm.
People showed up.
Yeah.
Apparently, everybody's really happy to be back at the stadium. Because people showed up, it was very, very impressive. Hi, fantastic. I have to say, I am so glad to have been part of a board that was able to do the early start time.
Just a quick question. Is there a list of the activities posted somewhere? Or is it on the district site for us uninformed parents where nothing else is interesting at the high school?
Um, I'm not sure if we, if it's on the website, but we had like, there's definitely a PDF of like all the different clubs.
Is there?
And that was like emailed to us for students. I'm not sure where.
Dr. Figaro actually has, you have a, a master list of all the approved clubs.
That would be nice to add to the district site.
Yeah. I, I happen to be there when the students were doing this walkabout around the building. It's interesting to watch this mass, the entire student body, just navigate around the school. And the entire perimeter of the school was lined up with clubs. And you'd see people quickly assembling their wares right before students were coming around. So, it was fun to watch.
I have to say, it's like mini trick or treat. Because a lot of the clubs, like, yeah, it's marketing, right? So they do their little trifle, they have a little presentation, and they have a little basket of candy. So, you know, if you sign up for an interest meeting, you can get some candy. But yeah, so that's, that's a lot of fun.
Well, it's highly effective marketing because I know after my two high school students went, I was texted that I needed to get on Community Pass and sign them up for something. So, it must have been very, very effective. All right. Following that, we have the public hearing on the school level self-assessment for determining grades under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act for the period ending July 30th, 2022 pursuant to NJSA 18A 17-46. Is that you, Dr. Figaro?
That is me. Thank you very much, and good evening, everyone. The Commissioner of Education developed a program to grade each public school and the school districts' efforts to implement the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act, or the ABBR. This time period was from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. A rubric was developed by the Department of Education, and each school was asked to self-assess their school's implementation of the ABBR. The self-assessment consists of eight core elements. That's HIB programs and approaches, training, additional staff instructional and training programs, curriculum and instruction on HIB-related information, HIB personnel, school HIB reporting procedures, HIB investigation procedures, and overall HIB reporting. The process is that it is required that this self-assessment be made available for public comment. The self-assessment results must be approved by the Board of Education and submitted to the state by October 31st, 2022. The school district's grade will be the average of the grades of each school in the district. Each school's safety team was charged with assigning rates based on the criteria and available documentation to support each score. The posting of the scores, the Department of Education will post all school and school district scores on the New Jersey Department of Education homeroom page. Each school must post the grade received and the district's score on their school's webpage. And the school district must post the district grade, which is the average of all the school's self-assessment scores on the district homepage. The scoring for each component of each element was as follows. A point value was assigned for each indicator. Does not meet requirements, zero. Partially meets requirements, one. Meets all requirements, two. Exceeds requirements, three. Important notes, the focus of our 2021-2022 school year was additional training for Bullying Prevention Climate Committee and additional training for community programs, the morning and aftercare. Bless you. In order to address these areas, multiple trainings were arranged, including the anti-bullying specialists were trained as trainers through Olvea's. They facilitated summer professional development for the Bullying Prevention Climate Committee and the Safety and Climate Teams. A training program was developed, our anti-bullying specialists and community program staff were trained as well. Based on the 2021-2022 HIB self-assessment, we did earn a perfect score. We will, however, continue to have our school safety and climate teams meet to focus on building school climate through activities as well as mindfulness strategies, health, and wellness. All of our schools and the district met all of the requirements. So much of what we do now with students regarding HIBs surrounds counseling and social emotional health versus discipline. The district total score for 2021-2022 year was 78, which is the highest score you can get. We will continue to work to help the whole child. The score is a function of the state. We will continue to focus on social and emotional health for our students. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Valeski and the Board of Education for allowing us to partner with Effective School Solutions, or ESS. ESS provides therapeutic intervention for our most at-risk students. ESS provides therapy for a period of time utilizing curriculums of anger management, substance abuse, bereavement, provides monthly parent support. It also provides professional development support for staff. This year, we've increased our supports through ESS by providing ESS support in our Emotional Regulation Impairment Program at the elementary level. We have also added Tier 3 supports for Churchill and the high school. So once again, I want to thank you, Dr. Valeski, and the Board of Education for your continued support. And I'll answer any questions or take any comments if you have.
Question?
Dr. Figaro, I mean, you know, you, you deserve some thanks, too. A lot of this talk about social emotional health and all occurred after the pandemic. Being on the board now, prior to the pandemic, Student Services was bringing to us, looking for extra, if I say it wrong, psychologists or counselors for the students. These were programs they hadn't asked several years ago, prior to the pandemic, and were heading off these type of service issues for emotional health with the children. So, this wasn't a reactionary thing from the pandemic. It's something that occurred prior to. Now it's in the headlines, it wasn't back then. So, you were ahead of the game, the team was ahead of the game. So we, as a board, thank you for being, being ahead. And we're in a solid place, we are now, because of that foresight to see that children are having a hard time, not just because of the pandemic, prior to and long after, they will have difficulties. So, thank you to you and your team.
Well, thank you, Mr. Sizmar. I will also, I will tell you that you said it right, it is a team effort. And that goes for many of the people in the audience and Student Services in the back. It's the student assistant specialists in the school, administrators, the nurses, the teachers, everybody working together to, to make this happen. So, we couldn't do it without the support of the Board of Education and Dr. Valeski. So it's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Moving on to For the Good of the Cause for the Public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should be generally, should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. All right, some reminders. The time, this time is for the public to speak to the board. We apologize, or we want to share with you that we're not able to comment or discuss back with you. That doesn't indicate a lack of interest or care or empathy. But if you are able to or would like to, the issues can be addressed later by Dr. Valeski's staff. If you stop and see those nice ladies in the third row, you can give your information to them to be contacted. And time is limited to three minutes, which will be kept by our Board Secretary. Is there anybody wishing to address the board this evening? Please. If you could state your name and address for the record.
Hello, Michael Wildemuth, 5 McElwain Drive, Freehold, Vice President of the East Brunswick Education Association. Happy to be here tonight in the absence of our President Dana Zimbicki. The EBEA leadership team wants to make, take some time to show our appreciation for our East Brunswick Public Schools bus drivers. Thank you to the many bus drivers who came here tonight. The start of every school year has its challenges, but this year, our busing challenges have certainly been amplified. We feel it's important for the public and parents of our students to know and understand our East Brunswick Public School drivers perform their job duties with the utmost diligence. They follow the directives given to them by their management team with professionalism, transporting the children of East Brunswick safely to and from their schools and activities. We'd like to extend our thanks to those parents and guardians who have taken the time to compliment our drivers for going above and beyond. We are very fortunate in East Brunswick to have the best drivers in the state. However, this year, many of our bus drivers have been disappointed by the lack of courtesy provided to them by some of our parents. We know parents are frustrated when the busing situation impacts their children. But please understand, our drivers are doing everything they can each day. Often, they're making double runs or doubling up on routes. They simply do their best to make it work. Our East Brunswick bus drivers are an essential part of our students' education. We appreciate you. We value you. We respect you. And most of all, we're thankful for all you do to keep our students safe. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I could just say something.
Oh, please, Dr. Valeski.
I, I just want to reiterate what Mr. Wildemuth said because we couldn't, we couldn't even attempt to do what we're doing without you. And I get to see your professionalism, professionalism every single day. And I, I know, I've talked to Joyce every day since the opening of school. Karen's talked to Joyce every day. Janet's talked to Joyce. Bernie's talked to Joyce. I mean, this has been, and we don't get to talk to you on the road, but we know where you are, what you're doing, what you're facing. And the complexity is so great. So I just want to sincerely tell, tell you how much I appreciate what you do in addition to Mr. Wildemuth's remarks. We, we just couldn't do it without you. So thank you.
You're here.
Is there anyone else wishing to address the board this evening?
Good evening. Alexandra Spielman, 6 Douglas Road. I just, two thoughts. One, I don't remember seeing anything about the budget within the agenda, so I was a little confused when I saw that. I think, to answer Mr. Sizmar, I believe in the May 5th meeting, I think the number was .007 percentage on that. The main reason I came here was to support the transportation team that we have here. With the changes that we've made, when it came to the beginning of the times, the beginning of the school, how we've merged Hammershold with the elementary starting at the same time, and Churchill, and the high school with that, that was a big change for that. I just got to say, hats off to every single one of you, both in-house and also contract. You guys have always gone above and beyond. I have used you when I was going to school in Hammershold and Churchill. And it is the lifeblood of our school. You know, if we do not have a good transportation team, we can't get students to and from school, they can't get to sports meets if they're doing that. If they're having a late bus, they can't do that. I mean, where the requirements of the school really starts is where the buses and other transportation, you know, not just the bus drivers, but the aides that are there and all the other support staff that are part of it. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else this evening? All right. Close the public portion. All right. Before I ask for a motion to move tonight's agenda, is there anything that needs separating out? The whole thing? The whole thing? You'll be on the next question. Mr. Winston?
I just have an extension, if you're going to pass the whole agenda on the, on the 91 minutes.
We'll take the extensions as we do the votes.
Several of us do.
Yep, fair enough. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Can I get a motion to move?
So do.
Don't worry. Mr. Winston, Ms. Becker? All right, discussion? Questions?
Yeah, questions. On the travel report, some of this seems to be virtual and some of it seems to be live, or they attend in advance. How does that correlation vary?
I'm going to ask Mr. Crossfield.
Absolutely.
Step up to the podium and respond to the trial.
It's been a lot of virtual over the last couple of years.
Can you just state the question again, so I understand?
On the travel report, there's some people who tend to attend a conference and some are virtual. How does that, you know, the pay scale end up working?
Right. So if it's virtual, it's only the cost of the registration to attend a virtual workshop on the computer. So we don't have to pay mileage reimbursement, potentially a hotel, airfare, or anything like that. So it is a savings. Of course, if it's in person, the regulations dictate, you know, what the allowance is for travel, hotel, meals, et cetera. So, it's just a case-by-case basis, and we are seeing more virtual options. So, there's pros and cons, I think, to what they are.
Anyone else?
Just, if I can, just a reminder for board members that do have a travel approval on the agenda, please abstain on your. That too.
All right. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Carangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes, with two extensions. Financial Services, number 12. And under Human Resources, I need to abstain on the portion for non-certificated employees. portion for non-certificated employees. Everything else is yes.
Just to clarify, for the non-certificated portion, is that on the regular personnel agenda or for the addendum?
There's one on each.
Okay. Both.
Yes. I don't want to identify an individual employee.
Noted. Mr. Hung?
Yes, but abstain from the financial service, at number 13.
Noted. Mrs. Reese?
Yes, but abstain on Board of Ed, number two.
Noted. Mr. Winston? Abstention on the, I don't have the numbers offhand, but I'm sure you do, on the minutes from the first, along with the travel, where I'm named. Number 15, it appears.
Minutes are number two.
Noted. And the rest, you're voting? A yes. Yes. Okay. Noted. Thank you. And Mrs. Goss?
Yes, with an abstention on Board of Ed, number one, the minutes for August 18th.
Noted. Motion?
Uh, motions carried. Thank you. Sorry. Moving the whole thing just threw me a little bit. All right. That brings us up to new and or old business for the board. Yes? Am I in the right place now?
Yes, and we don't have any old business.
All right. So, that brings us to new business committee reports, information items, and for the good of the cause for the board. And I had a few things I wanted to talk about. Piggybacking off what Megan was saying about the students' response to start times, all over the state, the entire time that I've been in education, people have talked about wanting to back up start time, especially for the high school students. It's so early. And being able to do this, this was such a privilege to be part of a board that could, and thank you to the team for finding a way to back up the start time for the high school. And I've heard people say, you know, like, I start my job that early. But it's different having to be available to learn at that early, early time. It's just very different. And I already see, in my own household, the difference that the start time is making. It was an absolute pleasure to be back at the stadium for the first home football game, and the Bear Den was very, very impressive. The number of students that came out to support was just really nice to see. I also wanted to say, I had the pleasure of attending my first back-to-school night at the high school, which was exciting and a little bit of an odd feeling, because I have a senior, but I had never been to a back-to-school night there. But it was nice to see the number of teachers that were out and the enthusiasm. The teachers were talking very, very specifically about their excitement about some of the new textbooks and the curriculum, and chemistry teachers were really fired up about. It was just really good to see what we do in action over there. And I also wanted to add that the invitations for the ad hoc committee for the high school have begun to go out. I'm sure Mrs. Becker may wish to talk about it a little bit more. She's the chair, if you want to. And I wanted to thank the parties that were involved in the Unity Week, but that's, or the Unity Walk, excuse me, but that's Mrs. Chu's. That's it for me. Anybody else? Mr. Winston?
Thank you. Yeah, I have four things. First of all, on the buses. I'm sorry that you went through all of this and what, and how you've been treated. I will say that I had somebody reach out to me and shared a story with me. It probably is, probably already made its way around. I guess a kid got on the wrong bus. And who is that? Was that you? Can, can, do you want to tell the story or can I? Because, all right, I will, because the kid gets, the kid gets on the wrong bus. You go ahead and make, and make your, what's the word, route drop-off?
Yeah.
And then you went back and made sure that kid got home safely.
Yep.
And made sure he texted his mother, so she knew.
All right. So, parents out there, if you're watching this, leave these people alone. All right? And with that, with that, I would like to offer a, if not an exploratory or a motion to create a bus behavior bill of rights that would apply to the parents. I have no issue for, for family losing their bus privileges if they don't know how to behave with, with our bus drivers. They don't need to go through that. And that is, and that is, that is something I'd either like to explore or make motion on, and you could decide whichever.
It's something I think we would explore.
Explore. Fair enough.
I like it.
Okay. Fair enough. Now, on to just the two other things real quick. I know the ad hoc committee has been formed. When does the clock start? I know we have a five-year clock now that we've installed the TCU's to take action. When did that clock start?
Go ahead, Mr. Julian. I'd say that it began with the first day of school.
Yeah.
All right. So, we're on the clock. I would like to, hopefully, and maybe Committee Chair, Ms. Becker, would be able to provide me with a timeline of when we're going to start seeing a timeline, drawings, a direction in which we're going to be going in, and an explanation for all of the expenditures that are going out of the budget, going toward this architectural firm that I know it's high school-related, yet we've seen no product as a result. And I know we're in the hundreds of thousands at this point to that company. So, I'm looking forward to your report, Ms. Becker. Thank you very much. I have nothing more.
Check's in the mail. No problem. I'll have it for you, Jeff. I don't anticipate having a meeting until November, December. I think we had talked about our first meeting. But I'll be sure to get all the information for you, and we'll keep the board informed every step of the way. Okay? Promise.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Siz, oh, Ms. Becker.
I was saying, your end up, I said you first.
Oh, okay. So, I also wanted to say something to the bus drivers. So, I live at, I think, two bus stops. I will tell you where. But actually, over the years, there've been different schools that stopped at my corner, shall we say. And I think I've, I've seen everything from parents chasing buses, parents following buses, people not seeing your stop sign that's lit up and just deciding to drive around it. I think that the role of the bus driver, as, as has been said, and as you so eloquently said, cannot be underestimated. The school day starts with the safety of our children in your hands. You do an amazing job. This is extraordinary circumstances. It seems we've had a lot of extraordinary circumstances in the last few years, and I think that the world is getting weary of extraordinary and wants normal. But right now, what you are dealing with is still extraordinary circumstances, and we thank you so much for your dedication to the children and for everything you have to put up with. And I am, I personally am going to go out and start doing citizens arrests of people who decide to just ignore your stop signs on the side of your bus and just drive around anyway, because they want to get down Blank Road 30 seconds faster than the person backing them. To me, that has to be one of the most dangerous things. So, thank you so much for putting up with everything.
Thank you.
Regarding the football field, great job. As you guys already know, I'm always on the field and the track, I can't wait next week or whenever. But I noticed that the girls soccer and the lacrosse are not on the field. What is that?
There are markings on the field to enable us to paint those lines. The lines were not permanently installed, because then the field becomes too busy, way too busy, with a lot of different colored lines. So, those are, those have markings in place to enable the painting with temporary paint. Soccer, actually, was given the okay to go.
Okay. Because I was at the game last week, and they were at the other field, and I was worried about that.
They'll be, they'll be going back.
Now, Mr. Carangelo, part of the issue that, that we encountered was, we want to get our athletes on the turf, but the track, in its construction process, there were a lot of things that, that they have to keep doing, and so they were able to give us the okay that the athletes were able to cross over and get on the turf, and they had plastic down and all that kind of stuff. But, you know, we want to make sure the track is 100% of what we expect, and it has to be perfect. So, I'm sure you will. I'm sure you'll like it when it's, when it's done. So, that's, that's what, that's the holdup, but if people can just be patient for one more week, weather permitting, we think we're going to be there.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yeah. Quick, quick, go to the cause. In the public portion, Part Four is all statements shall be directed to the Presiding Officer, which would be Mrs. Goss tonight. No participant may address or question board members individually. An individual from the public felt the need to try to correct me in a question I was asking. It's totally improper in this meeting. I will bring the slide next time, and, you know, but again, whether I'm right, wrong, or indifferent, no member of the public should be coming up here addressing me correctly. And if they're proven to be found to falsely try to correct me, I, I think they need to watch their statements when they're coming up here for different possible political purposes. Thank you.
Barbara?
Well, I just want to, again, oh.
Thank you. Start with a thanks to our bus drivers. Thank you for all you do. I want to reiterate what has been said here. You really make a big difference in kids' lives and little kids that get on the bus for the first time. It's a, it's a big moment for them, and just to see a friendly face, someone that speaks to them, takes the time to care for them, at all ages, but really our youngest riders, it's a big impression on them. It's a memory that they have forever. So, none of the things that we do, whether it's start times, whether it's after-school activities, all these things wouldn't happen without you, and we do appreciate what you do, and it makes a big difference in, in, in the entire district, what you do. So, we appreciate it. Thank you so much for all that you go through. We, we see it, and we thank you, and we're here to support you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I wasn't going to say anything, because, you know, I think it's been well said by everyone else, but, you know, just the, the fact that you're all here and, you know, standing together, just, just one more word of thanks to all of you for the work that you do. So, I couldn't agree with more, more with all the statements that have been made. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hung?
So, again, thank you guys very much to drive our student to and from schools. I have three boys using the bus, and there was bus stop in front of my house. So, every day, I saw the parents take, send their children to, to my, in front of my house, and I always heard the driver said, "Back up, everybody sit down," and then close the door and start to move. So, that is very important, and I talk to the parents that are very, very pleased for all you guys did every day. Thank you. Additionally, if you saw those parents run their stop, run their bus, so you can write down their license plate, and I can help you guys study a private citizen complaint in Middlesex, in East Brunswick Municipal Court, they come up to 10 days in jail and up to $500 fine for each violation. Yeah, this, it's very serious. I personally defend so many of these kids, but for East Brunswick, I'm willing to start this case and took those parents to, to the court. It's very serious. We heard all kinds of horrible stories about children got injured, even got killed. And second, I want to thank Victor and Dr. Bowley for the curriculum and the textbook. You guys work so hard to bring our course and the textbook to update, to prop, to provide our students with most current knowledge. That is very important. Thank you very much. And I cannot wait for a next curricular committee meeting. Each time, all kinds of new ideas come up. I'm very happy to hear that. At the same time, I encourage all, more teachers join the curricular committee, because you guys have the firsthand experience about our students, about the material you're going, you are going to teach. So, we, as a board, we want to hear from you, and so I anticipate to say more. And third, so everyone knows that the Middlesex County Vocational School, Cheneau to Middlesex Magnet School, I want to know if any of our talent teachers or talent students are attracted by that student, by that school.
Mr. Hung, so far, I'm not aware of any, but we, we do have students that attend that institution, and I suspect that we will continue to have students who will attend that institution. But what that means is that East Brunswick Public Schools, as we continue to look to the future, and with the ad hoc committee and the possible pursuit of a new high school, we're looking for opportunities to create environments for our teachers and for our students to have cutting-edge experiences and prepare them for the 21st century, real experiences that they can apply to the job market, whether they, they decide to go right to college, or they get a technical certificate, or move into the workforce and have an internship. I, I think the, the opportunities for students over the next decade is, is going to change, and I think the job market is going to dictate how our students navigate their education and how they get it. So, that's where I think we have an opportunity to look to the future and reinvent how we offer opportunities for our students.
Thank you.
Mrs. Becker?
Just want to bring up the rear. First of all, Mark, I want to thank you for reminding everybody collectively, the board, residents, parents, viewers of these meetings, if anything, how important making sure that your facts and information are always correct. The best thing that we can do as a group up here is to make sure that we provide the correct information, and it's, it is a collective responsibility, and thank you for reminding us of that. And last, Ms. Heather, sitting in that chair and running this meeting, some people think it's, looks kind of easy, right? So, I can tell you it isn't, and particularly having to fill in at the last minute, so I want to say, good job.
Thank you.
I agree. Great, Heather.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Well, I have to say, it is not easy. It was an absolute pleasure to do, and having sat in a hot high school room in another district all day, this was, this was much better. So, even though it's difficult, much better.
Jeff has that look on his face, and the meeting before he makes an age joke. I know it's coming.
It's, I thought that's where you were going.
It's so nice to go. I mean, it really is. Really, it's quite nice.
I thought it was going to be about my age. I thought that's where we were going.
No, it would have been about my age. It would have been about my age.
Mrs. Reese?
And just on a positive note, I just, I'm sorry.
Is your mic on?
Thanks again. I got it. I got it. Just on a positive note to thank Dr. Valesky, Dr. Bowley, Dr. Figaro, all our principals, administration, teachers, staff, bus drivers, maintenance folks, everyone that I'm probably forgetting, but we, it's a great start to the school year. I know we've had some, you know, bumps in the road, but we kind of forget that it's hard to do, right? And especially with what we've been through the last two, three years, it's, and they, you really work night and day to make sure these things happen. I just, I know we all feel the same way, but I didn't want it to go past without saying we do appreciate what you do, and we do appreciate what the staff does, and it's, it's a tough job, and we appreciate that you do it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Here goes the last difficult part. I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All right. Mr. Winston, Mr. Carangelo? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Thank you.
We are adjourned.